Hey, Lord, we ask that you please watch over this great state of Rhode Island, and in particular, the great citizens of West Warwick. We ask that you please help guide this council in making wise decisions, informed decisions, and always with a little bit of compassion. Amen.
Can you ladies, if not, pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, that's nice. Just so you know what you're doing, think you get complaints.
Councilman Tucker?
Here.
Councilman Kenahan?
Here.
Councilman Abdullah?
Here.
Council Vice President Giroux?
Here.
Councilman?
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Marion, hold on one second. Go ahead, Dave.
I move that the minutes of the January 19th, 2016 executive session be kept closed in accordance with Rhode Island General Laws 4246-4 and 4246-5A2.
Section.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Consent agenda license applications resolved that the consent agenda having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed of or awaiting recommendations is hereby approved.
I'll move the resolution.
Second. Moving second, any discussion?
Yeah, one.
The letter from the tax collector's office on West Warwick Flowers, has that been?
Two fifty?
Yeah, has that been taken care of?
That was from Providence Street, because they were... The daughter said that it wasn't in her name, the mother put it in her name, and it was a big to-do, so...
Has it been resolved since?
Well, thank you.
It's been cleared.
We received, we received from the state notification that there would be close, right?
Right. Does the state?
Yeah, State Department of Health.
Right, the letter from the tax collector.
She should be open. She should be open.
Okay, and I've got another question also, though. I think there was...
Hold on one second.
I think there was reference to at least one person that hadn't, that was delinquent on their taxes. It might have, I think it was a boarding house. Is that, is that in here?
It would be pending, um, paying their taxes, they're approved and...
It would be, okay.
But this two fifty, Fred, I'm not mistaken, they've been open since they moved there.
What's your first name?
Yeah.
I gave you a kid a book a week ago. So, I was just...
Good one.
Out of the back?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's on the back row.
Unbelievable.
Because they don't want to pay the five, is it five hundred dollar fee or something? Christine Brosch. Christine, you out there?
She's right there.
Is the West Warwick Flowers, are they paid in full? Are they up to date with taxes?
She's the assessor.
The, the letter was written on your floor.
She's the assessor. She wanted to know.
Laurie Andrade's the one who said cannot approve West Warwick Flowers business at this time, so John, that'd be for you.
Last I heard, they were unpaid, and I believe it's pending the payment as Marion indicated.
So, in other words, even though if we approve or disapprove tonight, they will not get their license until their taxes are paid?
It will be pending, pending verification.
They will not get their license period, because I get a letter from the Department of Health today saying that they are not authorized open, so...
The flowers bad?
I don't know.
Not tasting good, but, didn't say why?
It was because the daughter went down there, said it was in my name, I'm not part of this, I don't want any part of it, so they said then that's the only record that they had.
Yeah, blaming the mother and the daughter, blaming one another.
Okay.
If some of these people are in here that are waiting for their license approval, why don't you tell them that they're all set?
Well, we haven't voted on it yet. We're still in discussion. Any other comments on licenses? Any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Bizarre raffle license for Ocean State Sports, new business license for Jason De Vega, Robert Iavino Jr. under Iavino Appraisal Services, West Warwick Flowers has been approved by the council pending taxes and state approval, James Preett Fitness Studio, DJ Consulting, Screen MD, Antiques and Secondhand, or Realty A Games, and that's all been approved. Hopefully I didn't miss anybody. Thank you. Eighty-nine pages in that one one.
Consent agenda correspondence resolved that the consent agenda having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed or awaiting recommendation is hereby approved.
I'll move the resolution, second.
Moving second, any discussion? Any public discussion? As you can see, there's Michael O'Connell looking for a contribution for Friendly Sons of St. Patrick. General Dynamics has also invited us to a, to the Crown Plaza on Monday, January 25th Town manager sent a letter to Executive Michael O'Connell and chairman for the tipping fees.
Is that the same Michael O'Connell that does the parade?
No.
Different?
Different Michael O'Connell. And the hosh page dinner inviting for the town council for March 5th at the Venus de Milo. Angelo and I attended last year, it was a very good dinner, very interesting to see. If anybody would like to go, please get in touch with Ricardo or myself, I can let Ricardo know. If not, let me know either way.
They have like a thousand people there, it's huge.
Yes. I just don't know if I'm going to be in town on March 5th, so I told him that, depending on my work schedule.
How much are the tickets? Around a thing?
Um...
Forty-five? I don't know. It's forty-five. I think they count the council.
I'm not sure.
I forget.
I think, I think it was forty-five or twenty-five. But, give me a head count, and they usually, like Angelo says, take care of the council. They like to see us there. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Appointment for Assistant Municipal Court Judge resolved that the town council hereby acknowledges the appointment of Thomas Cronin as an Assistant Municipal Court Judge for the town of West Warwick. Thomas Cronin, 52 Hysteria Drive, Coventry, Rhode Island, 02816.
I'll move the resolution for discussion, second.
Moving second, discussion. Johnny, just want to give a brief...
Yeah, I've been studying the judge since July of 1998, it seems like yesterday. I didn't tell me Williamson was in high school at the time. But he got great back. Long time ago, he got great back.
Probably, probably having detention.
He was, he was attending college, but he was found in the hallway in high school.
That was about ten hours long, so that's a very high possibility.
We scheduled, as you're probably aware, over a hundred and 120 cases each, every other week, and during that time, I have never missed one session for illness, and someone asked me a few months ago, what happens when you can't make it? I said, oh Christ, I don't, I've never even thought of that. Tim obviously can't sit because his department is before me as the prosecution, and there'd be a total conflict there. I talked to my partner, Tom Cronin, who's been a partner with me now for about eight years, Tom doing a practicing attorney for over 20, lives in Coventry with his family, and if you see fit, he would come in at no cost to the town. My salary, his still my salary, he's just going to fill in for me on a no-cost basis, but it would result in not any inconvenience for the hundred or so people that show up here, hopefully on a Thursday evening every other week. And again, it's nothing that would involve the town expense whatsoever, but it would just, you know, accommodate it, and I will take him, if you see fit, to appoint him, and show him the ropes, which are pretty much the same as traffic tribunal. So, in other words, it'll be like our solicitor, when he's not available, his law office just to show up on a day or... You got it.
Other than it's an actual appointment.
Right, it's not, it's not an appointment.
There's no problem with the charter on that?
Well, we're not appointing, we're just...
Well, no, he's asking for an appointment.
Yeah, well, again, you have to designate him as an Assistant Municipal Court Judge so he can sign on that thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Your charter does speak to a town resident, but those charters have not been addressed in many, many years. If you recall, your town charter with the probate judge also speaks to a resident, and that has been looked at as not being constitutional in the past, and we do have a probate judge who doesn't live in town and serve, so it's, it's the same thing that we have in that department and that we've done for the past probably 10 or 12 years.
Tim, I realize that's been protocol in the past, or gave you any legal situation where...
Like term, term of office, I mean, what, what's, how do we...
The way, it is not going to be, there's no compensation, there's no benefits, there's no compensation at all, or remuneration, so Mr. Bernero, who has the appointment, is getting the benefit of the, of the compensation, which I believe he indicated is through a salary.
Yeah.
W-2.
I want a W-2 salary.
So, he's a, he's a town employee. Question is, if John cannot sit for any particular reason, let's say he gets hurt and he's out for six weeks, theoretically, there would be three sessions missed, who handles it? Town solicitor, town solicitor has the ability to sit in for the probate judge that does not have the ability to sit in for a municipal court judge. A police officer who would prosecute for some of the minor traffic offenses that are similar to the traffic tribunal would not be able to sit in judgment of those same matters. So theoretically, because we have a municipal, municipal court, we have a municipal court budget, the municipal court brings in revenues to the town, you would not have the ability to have that accomplished. The charter is silent as to assistance or any other deviation of assistant or associate judge, since the prosecute, excuse me, prosecuting police department and/or prosecuting department, like the building official, cannot sit in judgment of whom they're prosecuting, because the solicitor can't do it. Right now, the framers of the charter never consider a municipal court judge not being able to sit, so it's being proposed that a member of Mr. Bernero's firm, without compensation, would be able to sit when he is not able to, and my understanding is, it's when, only if he happens to be sick.
That's it.
Not taking off four months at a time to be on vacation, or...
In the last 17 years, how many times have you been sitting?
Never, never.
So, it could be, you know, he could be just an assistant and never even be here.
You got it, you know, other cities and towns like in Coventry, Otto Capaldi has John Valanga sit as his clerk and can sit because he is an attorney. Some cities and towns have appointment of more than one, like Providence has got three, Johnston had two, I'm not sure if they're back to one, but you do need some coverage on it, and it's, it's just would be, I mean, we could continue the cases, but that is totally unfair for a, you know...
Person to take a day out of work or whatever.
A voter is coming up here and taking time out and then saying, you know, I mean, I think we've canceled for snow on one occasion only.
Each, each of you should come to municipal court at least once in your life to see the actual number of people that come here.
Oh, yes, I do.
I want, I want to televise it. I, I have, I have been here for, and, you know, I've always commented on what a great job you guys do, the clerk and the clerk's office and yourself, for the amount of people that walk in and out of here.
Just as a reminder, this again is one of the items that you might want to consider with a charter amendment, because it was never addressed originally. As a matter of fact, I believe the municipal court position actually came out, it wasn't the first charter go-around, it was, it was one of the first amendments.
Well, actually, the, the first municipal court, what's been incorporated by the charter, is a legislative grant. The legislators created each and every municipal court, and we went to the legislators way back when, probably in the early 80s, and Ray Lambert was the first, was the first judge, then Will Smith came in, and then myself, but no one has ever looked at this, and again, it wasn't a question posed to me, I probably wouldn't be standing here, but I just think it's something that, you know, should be considered as someone else. I mean, every other court has some backup, but your solicitor obviously cannot back this up for me.
Yeah, and in our situation here, the clerk is not an attorney, that could be easily interchangeable with the judge, so again, if John happened to go down, you can just imagine the number of matters that can't be heard for those three periods, those three court dates, but also during that six-week period of time, you're also going to have additional tickets being addressed, police prosecution, building official prosecution.
Double duty.
But this is, this is, this is not for vacation, this is for...
No, just, no, no.
In the event, in the event he could not sit...
I plan my vacations around the court, Marion and I work it out.
At least on that for 17 years.
I'm just saying, you know, if, if next Thursday, I'm sick and fed with the flu, I need a body to come in and take care of it.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just questioning, you know, what authority do we have? We have to name, Mr. Cronin, is that?
Yes.
Yeah. You have to name him, or, or can we say, at your discretion, you name who you want to, to name, but we're going to authorize him to have an assistant?
Well, the appointment, the appointment process, you've already appointed John Bernero.
Yeah.
If you want to allow John Bernero, by ordinance or by resolution, to pick a replacement, if he is sick, it's not really, there's no violation of the charter, because there's no position of Assistant Municipal Court Judge in the charter.
We're not appointing.
But, so the question is whether you're going to appoint him as an Assistant Municipal Court Judge, I mean, you, you might want to say, all right, there's certain conditions, he will sit only if Mr. Bernero is ill, he is not going to get compensated, this, I mean, we can draw this thing out.
But I think the appointment should come from the legislative body.
But I think the question is whether or not there has to be an appointment itself, or whether or not you can just choose.
If it's an appointment, there's got to be, you know, there's got to be a start and an end date to it.
Or do you want to give, you want to give, you want to give the judge the power to select the member of his firm?
If you do, that's fine.
His, his incapacitation could prevent him from doing that.
Doing that, yeah.
You don't know what the situation is.
No, 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 what I'm saying is, he would do that now by picking Mr. Cronin.
Gotcha.
Okay, fine. Just give me the authority to do it, and I'll be done.
You wouldn't leave it open, so, for example, if for some reason you could not choose, then we're, we're stuck. But if you're going to approve your ability right now to, to select Mr. Cronin to replace you, if you're incapacitated because of illness, I think that's a better route to go, therefore it's really not an appointment, you're just authorizing him to do that.
Because Judge, one of the other things that's on my mind is that it's really a political appointment.
It is.
Yourself.
And that would end upon my term, okay?
Okay, I mean, yeah, there's got to be a sunset provision.
No, no, anything, my term, I think, goes to 18. Anything beyond, cannot go beyond my term, that coincides with my term, and his appointment will end with my term, that or resignation.
Let's, let's go, just, your appointment would end when it ends. His selection...
So, we'd have to impeach you to get rid of him? What if we like him and we just don't like you?
His, the selection...
Did you been replaced?
The selection of Mr. Cronin by the appointed judge would end when the judge is appointed.
Correct.
Let's assume a couple of things. Mr. Cronin decides to leave the law firm next year, Mr. Bernero will then have to come back and say, Mr. Cronin has left, I would like the authority to be able to select another replacement, and at that point in time, he may say...
Do you want confirmation of a council?
I, I just think, out of due respect to the council, you should know who I'm appointing, and I, I don't like the, I mean, if you want me to appoint Tom and you're satisfied with that, I think you need to confirm that. I don't want to take it upon myself just to put someone on, but I'm coming before the council.
I would think, I would think the best, the best thing to do would put it in the form of a resolution or an ordinance, because again, the charter is silent as to this particular issue, so therefore, it might be more prudent to do it as an ordinance.
Oh, yeah.
But that would just take, you know, the intent is known, and then if the council decides, you can move to amend the charter at the appropriate time.
Yeah, I just think the council should be the last word.
Yeah, that's why I think, that's why I think Mr. Bernero brought it before you.
He'll draw that up for, for next...
I think what we'll do is, if we do an ordinance, there's going to be two readings. We'll have the first, the council can have the first reading, first meeting in February. Second reading for the second, 20 days after that, it would become law.
So, don't get sick, John.
That's fine, I'll be back.
So, what I'll do is, we'll, we'll take the language that exists right now for both municipal court and probate, and we'll work out an ordinance that will absolutely define what the powers of Mr. Cronin would be during the term of the appointed official.
Yeah, and that, that would take care of the issue from the years to come.
That's great, that's great.
Yeah, no, well, thanks for coming forward. All right, so we'll table this matter until next meeting.
Very good, thank you for your time, I appreciate it always. Why do you want to, why do you want to table it?
Do you guys... Because he's going to draw it up.
He's going to draw an ordinance.
Well, this appointment would be tabled until such time as the ordinance was approved. You wouldn't really need a resolution for the appointment of an Assistant Municipal Court, so my suggestion maybe is, don't vote on this at all, or reject it outright, knowing full well we're going to have an ordinance prepared for the next...
Don't take no action.
Take no action. Next item.
Very good.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good health. And think about, think about televising the...
I'll know if you're playing rookie, you don't live too far away. Can we make any money on it?
Caught in West Warwick. We could advertise on it.
Hey, John.
It'll be the hottest, it'll be the hottest show in town.
I think if we put Tim Williamson's firm as the sponsor of that show, we can get along with a lot of good press.
Yeah.
Williamson Law, here, William Lee Lee.
Johnny, no comment.
No comment. Boy, leave Timmy alone.
Yeah, you did, I'm surprised.
No, guys, I'm very sensitive. He was crying the other day.
All right.
Update on redevelopment authority sponsored by Councilman Tucker.
Yeah, I asked to put this on this week's agenda. I attended the last redevelopment authority meeting, which was last week, and I wanted to invite Bob Boyer just to update the council on what, where they stand from the last meetings. Bob here?
I don't see Bob here.
I don't see if he was asked to be here, said he would be here, I don't...
Is anybody from the redevelopment authority here?
Let's, let's move, let's move on, but we'll skip this item and see if he shows up. He, it is a little late, it's a little cold out there, too, so...
Development agreement between Lippett Mill LLC and the town of West Warwick resolved that the town council hereby approves the development agreement between Lippett Mill LLC and the town of West Warwick, and authorizing the council president to sign the agreement previously tabled, sponsored by Council President Gosman.
I'll move to take it off the table.
Before we take it off the table, I just want to ask one quick thing from Timmy. I spoke to Fred earlier, they just want to give us an update on the fire that happened here today, and also want to continue this until next meeting, so should we take it off the table and just let them give us a brief update on the fire, or should we leave it on the table and then, leave it tabled?
Leave it tabled, let Fred explain what happened, if you can, as relates to the fire, because there's really nothing for, there's no agenda item to allow that to explain the fire. We can do it under the manager's report, if you guys want to stay around, if you've got more specifics than what Fred has.
They, they, they went out for the site.
All right, my suggestion would be then, Mr. President, is to move to the manager's report and allow for these gentlemen to explain...
All right, so we'll take no action, that's still tabled till the next meeting, and I just need a motion to move.
Yeah, I make a motion to move manager's report, on the agenda. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Fred, on deck.
How are you?
Good. Well, then I guess we'll start with Lippett Mill, the town of West Warwick. As the, as council's aware, there was a fire early this morning, the call came in about 4:00 AM. Our firefighters did a great job getting it down quickly, it was brutal conditions out there, as you all know, it was as windy as could be, and it was extremely cold, but...
Everything was freezing up on them.
Yeah, so, they did a great job, but as fate would have it, Chris Shaw, who's, represents the, the new owners for Lippett Mill, was on his way up here for this item on the agenda and was able to deal with the aftermath in person, so I'd just like him to give you a brief update of what's going on now, and John Dorsey, his attorney, is also here.
Just state your name and, for the record.
John Dorsey, Christopher Shaw.
All right, so what's going on with Lippett Mill?
As the council's aware, the, the receiverships remain in place to assist the ownership group in putting together their development package, and as we've mentioned before, when we've been in front of the council, one of the, the risks with this type of a project is that you do have a building that during development's unoccupied, so unfortunately, this morning, Chris did learn there was a fire, the smaller residential structure that's sort of an outbuilding to the main mill, we coordinated, and Chris coordinated, to have DEFCON consultants, who is the construction manager that he's going to be using for the project, get out to the mill this morning, they were able to, to take a physical inspection of it. Chris also spoke with, or I spoke with Fred, and Chris did as well this morning, we were also able to meet with the building fire department this afternoon, and now Chris has some protocols in place to deal with some short-term shoring up work, that's going to include having to provide some boards, because there are some open areas of the building structure, dealing with the roof, there, there is an open area of the roof that held to the fire, clearing some of the debris from around the, the outside of the house, and I'll, I'll let Chris give you some more specifics on that, if there's specific questions also, we just want to give the council an opportunity to ask Chris.
Yeah, so the game plan with the walk...
Just want to speak into the mic.
So, the game plan with the walkthrough that we did today was really just to set up a protocol to secure the building even more. That's going to start tomorrow, with the contractors coming out, boarding up, securing anything what needs to happen. The site is going through a transition now where you have contractors in and out, because we're looking to start different phases of the work right now. So you have contractors in and out, you know, on a daily basis, taking measurements, pictures, assessing things with the mill, so we can put the best plan together to, to make that happen. So the game plan right now is, we want to bring some type of security level more to the site, since we are, that's in place anyway, once we start construction, we're going to probably jump ahead and do that a little sooner. We're going to look at boarding up, we're, prevent anyone from, from trying to get in, and then constantly just, you know, just monitor. The key with preventing things like this to happen is just to get the project under construction as fast as possible, and we spent the last year pretty much buying it from the receivership and putting all the pieces together. The last document we're reworking on now would be able to pretty much shoot us to a closing, probably by the end of February, and then that will be, you know, full construction will start, trail is on site, site fence up, 24-hour security, and we start going from there.
The, the existing building that had the fire in it today, is that going to be rehabitable, or is that going to be...
It is, and that was the good thing, and that was one of the, you know, besides no one getting hurt, you know, that was one of the concerns with maintaining a historic property. It can be salvaged, like, like Tim said, the fire department did an excellent job with getting the fire out very quickly, so we can salvage the buildings, had architects there, they looked at it, so that's good news with being able to maintain the historic value of the site.
So, pretty much from, from what you're saying, this isn't adversely affecting your timetable?
No, not at all, not at all. If anything, it jumped it up, because I want to get those two buildings under construction now, just to be able to deal with any fire damage and so forth, and we can work with the building apartment just to deal with those, those two sites, those structures right now.
Report said it was accidental.
Um, I haven't heard any reports or anything, but...
Just what was on the news today.
Yeah, but I haven't heard the news reports, or find out what the cause was, but I assume it was accidental, I don't think it's, you know, it was done on purpose, but at the same time, you know, it's cold out, we want to prevent these type of things from happening, so...
Homeless and so on and so forth.
Yeah, yeah, you know, so the best way as far as to get into construction as fast as possible.
Any questions?
There, there was just one part of Chris's report that I, he, he mentioned, but he went by it pretty quick, and just from the receivership standpoint, I do want to point it out to the town, I know we've mentioned it before, is that over the past year or so, and I'm not saying this is the council's perception, but sometimes the perception is, unless you actually see the hammers going at the site, that there's not a lot happening, but I, I can tell the council from the work the receivership's done with Mr. Shaw's group from the work the receivership's done with Mr. Shaw's group that over the past year or so, they have done a substantial amount of work to put together the development package that they're confident will get the project built. They also have, and that, that started with buying the assets out of the receivership, which was a significant acquisition price. They also have taken some steps out at the mill that I don't want to be overseeing. One of the significant steps was, unfortunately, from the results of winding down prior operations at the mill, there was, and I'm estimating, but there was approximately 50, 55-gallon-barrel drums at the site, which had not been removed. And rather than putting their feet in the ground with the receivership and taking the position that they wouldn't close, Mr. Shaw's group did close and subsequently got those barrels out of the building, which could have been a real health and safety hazard. And during the receivership, that was one of our big concerns, so I, I just wanted to outline that for the council, just so they're aware we really are at the point now where, with the development agreement that we'll be proposing, that's sort of the last component in the development package, but it, it has been a sort of a long road for them, but they've been working very hard at it.
They've also cleaned out the backside of that property that was down towards the river, and it was a real mess. I just happened to look down there the other day and saw how clean it was in the backside. But you can understand our perception of unless there's hammers being built, because this has been five years in the making. And, you know, the previous owner came here before us and was promising the world to the town and getting those developed and getting it done. So, yeah, you, the receiver, and there's a bunch of back stuff that we don't know about, but until we do see a hammer go, that's when we'll believe it, you know, it's just, you know, it's just one of those things that, you know, until it happens, we want to see it happen. I think it's a good deal for the town, you know. Again, it's better than a vacant mill that could burn down and harm the neighborhood. I've seen throughout the state of Rhode Island, a lot of these mills, and considering that's one of the oldest, if it's not the oldest.
Second.
Second slate is the first oldest. Second oldest mill into be redeveloped and restructured would be huge for the town and keep that here as part of history in town, talking generations of families that used to work there and they still see the building, so it's good. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to finish my report?
Yeah, finish.
We want to be on.
We moved you forward tonight, so.
Yeah, you know, that's okay. Um, I mean, I get to leave after this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just wanted to update you, too. The solar project on the civic center right now, there was some setbacks due to structural analysis that was completed. They had to, engineers determined they needed to shore up the, the structure, even though we removed more weight from the roofs when we redid it than we're putting back up there. Their engineers felt that we had to put crossbeams in.
We love the engineers. We love the engineering.
In order to do that, to make that happen, though, we, the analysis that was done showed that the, given the age of the building, the paint up there is lead paint. So we have to have a remediation of the lead paint wherever they're going to be working on those beams. Basically, they're going to be soldering new beams across, so those areas have to be stripped of lead paint. That process is ongoing right now. We've arranged for the workers to be up there between 6:00 a.m. and 2:30 p.m., which time they're out of the building, everything's cleaned up, and the building's able to be used. That's our, they're starting in the fieldhouse now. That's our slow time, and we're making accommodations for the various teams and others to accommodate that. It's a little bit of an inconvenience, but it's, we're able to get it done and keep everything up and running, so it's, it's the best-case scenario right now. Should be two or three weeks in the fieldhouse, and then they'll move over to the ice rink and do the similar work on that side of things. So just so you know, that's ongoing, but they test before they leave the building to make sure there's no residue, and they're not scraping or anything. It's, they're, they're painting stuff on and taping up and stripping off, so there's minimal dust, and it's all contained in plastic when they're working up there, so.
Fred, what kind of timeframe does that leave to get the panels in place?
The panels, the plan right now is the panels go on in the spring, so all this work and the, and the new beams will be in place in time for to put the panels up in the spring. Worst-case scenario is sometime in June, everything's up and online, so that's where we're at right now.
Just to, just to go on with Fred, I spoke to him this weekend, how that started with the, and thank you for, for explaining it to us. The coaches were a little concerned because I guess one of the workers up there, they want to let them in till 3:00, and then they said, well, the other, the other guys are coming in, the outsiders are coming in at 3:30, you only got a half hour, because they come first, they're the paying customers. And Fred reiterated, he's going to tell them, they do not come first. The citizens of this town, the taxpayers of this town, our children that are in sports come first. The money means that second to our children. And they had a little thing when Fred mentioned that they had a lead abatement, and they were worried about the kids going in there and breathing, and myself included, and I just want Kendra to stress it out in the paper, say whatever you've got to say in the paper, that it's not being sanded, like Fred said, it's being taped, it's not going in the air where our children are breathing in lead paint, so the phones don't start ringing like they did today, and because you know how the word travels, and it's just different, and I'm glad that you explained it to me, and.
And the entire abatement plan had to be approved by the Department of Health, which they've done, they understand the use of the building, so that's all been accomplished. Next thing I want to talk about is the Phoenix Square tree removal.
Oh, God, that tree will last another 100 years.
No.
So we asked for.
Michael's Tree Service and somebody else has gone out there and checked it out.
Yeah, we've asked for quotes, there, there are issues with the tree in that it's dying in the, in the middle up top.
There's a big metal box that nobody knows what the heck it is. I think it used to hold the tree star on there or something, and.
Since it's been grown over.
It's grown over and it's rotted out in the box, and it's, it's, the middle where it splits like this, in between there, they're afraid that it could end up on the main street eventually.
So why don't they cut it in half? You've still got a nice tree.
Oh, my God, no you don't.
The cat will catch the light.
That's what happened. They cut the top off and it ended up being a nightmare.
We'll let the pingers take the other half.
So we did ask for quotes, and just see, Michael's Tree Service, Mike's professional Tree Service did submit a quote to us, and it was with a note that stated that because of the work that they've done for the town over the years, that they're willing to donate the majority of the job and do it only for cost, which is $500. That tree, you do a real price on that tree, and that's, that's with grinding the stump and getting everything out of there. That's removed complete for $500. So I'm bringing this before the council.
Well, here's, here's the question I have, and I, and I can agree, and trust me, that's a very cheap price, and I don't have.
It's extremely cheap.
I won't have an argument with that, but what I was looking at possibly doing is, the tree's been there for many years, and the lower half, or the, the stump portion of it, I was looking at possibly getting a company in there that carves the, the tree stumps and making that a portion, like either a park bench or something, that the tree could, portion of the tree will still be there, but as a park bench or some sort.
Take it out, let them carve it.
Take it out, let them carve it.
As a piece of furniture, yeah.
As a piece of furniture or whatever, so, I mean, I can get a price on that.
There's a guy in West Greenwich that does that.
Does that, yeah, he does, or he can make a sign that says Phoenix out of it, or something.
Yeah.
You know, the tree's there, but the tree is become very sadly looking over the past few years. It's hard to decorate, it's dangerous at this point. It's dangerous to decorate, dangerous if, you know, if we get one of these microbursts or whatever, you know, the last thing I want to do would be sitting in traffic at Hudson Cleaners and see that thing coming my way.
So I'm, I'm presenting this because we did go out and get the quotes, this was put out to us. It's not uncommon, we do, we have had work done.
No, I mean, it's.
In the, in the fire station where people have donated the work, and they do it for a tax write-off. I mean, they, they quantify it, but they take it off our bill, so it's a donation to the town, and that's how this would need to go forward if, if the council wants to move in that direction, but because of everything involved, it felt was prudent to bring it before you.
And for the record.
You make that determination, you're probably talking about $4,000, given the location, if we ask for a full quote.
And, and for the record, Mr. Beard also decorated the tree this year. I know the lights were a little crooked, but, you know, Mr. Messier made that very clear online. But he donated that, that time also, so, I, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, but I just want the residents, the business owners, and everybody to realize there will be some, there'll be a tree there before next November. You know, I was sitting in Phoenix Square Diner, and there were four gentlemen over in, some old timers that were over in the corner, upset about the tree, and I had to go over and explain to them, the tree is coming down, but another tree is going in its place, and we're still going to continue the tree lighting.
Call it the centennial tree.
We were actually going to cut it down last year and bring it to Arctic, but, you know, it didn't happen. But again, for safety reasons, I, I, the last thing, I mean, I know it's, it's part of history of West Warwick, but again, I would hate to see anything bad happen, so I, I can, I could take $500 for that tree any day, if anybody wants to take it down for that price. I mean, does anybody else have an issue with that?
You're going to have an argument with Horder.
Um, no, Mr. Horder is well aware, and, you know, maybe the next tree gets renamed, maybe it's in memory, maybe we even cut the tree to Horder, you know, who knows? We can, we could think of different things, and Mr. Horder's, his son's very well, obviously, if anybody knows the history, Frank Horder Sr., he actually brought that back when he had his penny candy store there in Phoenix, and it's, it's been a long tradition, and I know there's been a couple of times his son has come to the November lighting, and he's flipped the switch for us, and so on and so forth. And I know this year they did a big story on the history of the tree, which was great to, for the Daily Times to do that for us, and, you know, again, the business owners down there, after explaining to them what's going on, you know, everybody's upset the tree may be going, but, you know, they understand if it's unsafe, and they want to make sure it's unsafe, and, you know, we've confirmed that with the tree companies. Even when they went up there last time to decorate it, they found like a big metal box, I don't even know what the heck it is, so, you know, and it's rotten away from the center. And we also have an arborist that will be willing to go over there, too. The bottom's solid, the trunk is solid, and, you know, it's just, it's the upper half, and, you know, it's, if that upper half goes, it's not going to look pretty. I think the only thing holding it together right now is the lights.
Like, like the benches.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that was a good idea with the benches. They have a couple of benches there now, but if we can make a couple of benches out of those, out of the main stump, and we can, Angelo, we'll try to, see if you can find that guy's number out of West Greenwich.
I had it once.
I see all his work, he's out in West Greenwich, I know he's right there on Route 3.
I'll find out tomorrow. He cobs them bears in the stumps, he's great with a chainsaw.
And we could look at it that way, and it'd be, again, the history will be there, and tree.
Chris, even Cazella's, if you're just going to make a bench, you don't need a cava, they'll split it and make the bench for you.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a couple options you can go at, I don't know, remind me tomorrow, Dave, I'll make the call.
We'll get some options for that.
Fred, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Go back to, someone's got to turn something off.
You got it on. How many times you want?
Who's paying for the cost of those reinforcement crosspieces up at the civic center?
Is that part of the?
It's all part of.
The grant's paying for it?
It's been put into the project, yeah.
Oh, okay, so the town's not paying for it?
Correct.
I got some lumber.
Yeah, although the, the remediation piece, we do have to pay for, because that's something that we have to deal with anyway, and it's not just lead, there's also some areas of, of asbestos along those beams that were, that were uncovered, that we're, we're encapsulating and doing things, because there are things we didn't know about until we did this testing, so.
Well, you don't have to take it down. We don't have to, the only abatement you got to do is we take it down.
We're encapsulating and protecting, you have to, you have to protect, so once, once we tested and we found out what was there, we had to, so there's certain things we do, but it was all, John can go over, but we, we have, we have a civic center budget for you that you can see, but all that's wrapped into is part of the, the civic center.
How much?
For the remediation piece?
Yeah.
I think it was around, I think it was in the neighborhood of like $40,000.
$40,000?
Yeah.
And where's that coming from? Out of the civic center budget?
That was an estimate, we've got to figure out.
Or actually, we've established a civic center enterprise bond.
Yeah.
And that's running.
We'll go over that, and that's an item on the agenda.
Yeah, look at that today.
Yep.
Okay.
Next thing I wanted to cover quickly, the road bond, we need to get some direction. We'd like to go out to bid in the next month or two. There's a couple ways we can do this. We can go out to bid for basically a, an on-call company, so we'll go on based upon, we'll, we'll price it based upon linear foot of roadwork repaving. For certain projects, we can do that, but for drainage projects, we're going to have to go out to bid individually on those. So we're going to need some direction from the council. We talked about doing a workshop dedicated to that, so I just, I would like some guidance on if you'd like to schedule that.
And I think we need to, I think we need to hurry up on this because petroleum is down.
Absolutely. Now's the time to do it.
I'm sure asphalt's going to come down drastically compared to where it was three years ago, so.
Get as much road as you can. I always feel like the airlines.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right.
But I was going to bring that up in my ward reports, too. I mean, the sooner the better, Dave, we set up a meeting, because.
You guys want to meet next Tuesday?
We can get this going right away for when spring breaks, boom, hit them right on the spot, we'll know what roads got to be done, what drainage, if there's any sidewalk work that you want to do, it's all, all for your ward. Brian, you only owe us $129, so we'll be all set in five right at.
We get it, right?
I figured, because we gave, we gave part of ours out.
So Marianne will schedule that for us then, and then, so you want about an hour, at least an hour dedicated just for that, right? Nothing else on the agenda.
Maybe, Dave, Dave, I know from, is he here?
Yeah, he's.
Yeah. Like in Ward 1, I know most of my streets were, were done either by Kent County or the last bond I had, but I know there's a few more, but if you, you're on the road all day, if you see some that need it, I would like a list on what you think has to be done. I know Wakefield Street to Crossland, that's all been done, except for that piece right there, it's rumble and ramble where, where you fill up every day, and every time it rains, it comes out.
And we also have the latest list from Kent County, so we can compare all those and come up with, we can come up with a, a list for each ward.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be good.
That'll be a starting point, recommendation, and you can take it from there.
Estimated cost, I mean, I don't know how you would.
Well, you got to give them one.
Yeah. Sure.
I mean, they're going to be cheap now.
Okay, the, the school committee does have their budget workshop next Tuesday, so if anybody was planning on attending that, yeah, they're due to us by, they have to submit to you by the February 1st. So, so they're doing their budget workshop next Tuesday, so I don't know if you want to shoot for Wednesday for the workshop or?
Wednesdays I can, I got my son track. Any other day's good for me.
I'm open any day.
All right. So we'll coordinate.
Thursdays good, whatever.
So, let me get this straight, so next Tuesday.
Why can't, why can't we meet Tuesday?
I'm just saying, the school committee's budget workshop is the same time, just so in case anybody wanted to attend that.
Is anybody here?
We're going to know, we're not, why are we attending? They're going to give it to us.
I'm just bringing it up, that's all. It's, it's, you know, I, I know, Dave, you've attended in the past, and I just want to make sure.
I, I think I already, you know, I, I see Steve on a three-times-a-week basis now, between basketball and everything else, and I think I know where the school committee's going this year, and what they're going to try to do as far as helping us out, helping themselves out. So I, I, I mean, so I probably.
Okay, that's fine.
So I mean, next Tuesday, Fred, is there something you need to go to, though?
I can, I, you know, I, I meet with them regularly, so I know what's going on, yeah.
And, you know, they are going to be requesting something.
Yep.
We know that. So, I mean, it's up to you.
Yeah, we can, we'll work it out, I'll talk to them tomorrow and see if they need me there. I don't think they need me there, so we can go from there. Electronics recycling has been stopped by the state. We can no longer recycle electronics at our DPW facility. They've created a handful, was it three, Dave? Three, three depots where people can bring them. The closest one to us is at the Coventry DPW transfer station area. We're not allowed to collect them anymore. That's going to be a problem, because people are not going to drive.
What can, yeah.
The state.
Who's the skin?
Well, Resource Recovery.
Yeah, but what, what is their hazardous? There's non-hazardous to what?
Where's the cost?
I'm just telling you that we, we've always collected them in the past.
No, no, that's enough, I mean, are we satisfied with that decision?
No, we're not.
I'm not.
We're not.
No, I'm sure what TVs are gonna be all over West Warwick.
Yeah, exactly.
But DEM says we can't collect them, so, because...
Well, then DEM gonna be responsible to pick 'em up?
You're, you're on a roll with these letters, Fred.
Let's go.
Let's get another, another letter out there.
Let's get our senators, our reps.
Really, I mean, I'd like to know, I'd like to know why they're, how can they justify, no input, no hearings.
Guys, guys, you're getting caught, what's Dave's?
Rhode Island Resource Recovery does not accept electronic waste at the landfill. We've been dealing with an outside company, ORS, who was a, uh, company that took our electronics for nothing. They supplied the pod, we filled the pod, they come up and exchanged it. In turn, they got to recycle all the material, and they made all the profit on the recycling, which now the profit is in the dumper. So they laid off a bunch of employees, and they decided they don't wanna recycle anymore, so they went out of business. So then I called another company, uh, IndyCycle, who was also dealing with ORS, and in the meantime, they've been picking up our stuff and taking it to ORS, but now ORS is, like I said, completely out of business, so IndyCycle has no place to get rid of it either, and they were a nonprofit charitable thing, and they were using all the profits to, uh, support their charities. So now we don't have any place to get rid of it, we cannot take electronics to the landfill.
Where is Coventry getting rid of theirs, this is now a depot where they're gonna have the same amount?
Since ORS went out of business and everybody in the, in the state was dealing with them, everybody's been talking with Rhode Island Resource Recovery and trying to get them to come up with some kind of a plan. So they decided that they're gonna make, I think it's five, um, stations all around the state, where people can bring their, uh, electronics to and drop 'em off.
Yeah, but Dave, just to interrupt you for a minute, who are they to pick Coventry, why didn't they give, let us get input? Why couldn't it be West Warwick or Warwick?
Because Coventry has a full transfer station.
That's right, Coventry's got a licensed transfer station, we don't, we're only a small collection point.
Want to buy a salvage, John?
DEM says we cannot, we could not collect electronics, you don't even need a license, I got 'em. And store them on the property, they had, unless we had a covered container, which we did at the time with that, that pod. When they went out of business, I bought a container and we were storing it in there, which made us okay, but now that we can't get rid of it, we were overflowing, I had to get rid of this stuff. So, we are working with Coventry to get rid of our stuff that we have left over, and we're sending all our residents and everybody that comes to Coventry to drop it off, until the state changes something else.
I don't even understand, why can't we still collect it and we drop it off once a month or once, two months to Coventry?
Because municipalities can't collect the electronics and bring it to...
So who's, who's, uh, who, who's making money, who's got their hand in the box, 'cause obviously, some big politician is gonna get some, something out of this.
You need to, you needed to have a covered container.
You're the politicians, tell me who it is, I don't know.
David, you needed a covered container to make us legal because of DEM rules?
Yes, but, but...
So you still have the covered container?
I have a covered container, but at the rate that the stuff is coming in and not being able to get rid of it, we're above the point where you have to have a transfer.
That's what I don't understand, when are they opening up the depots like in Coventry?
They're open right now.
Okay, so what do you mean you don't have a place to get rid of it? Why can't you fill the pod and drop it off?
Can't, they won't let us collect it.
Can't do that, it has to be residential drop-off. They didn't make the rules, don't shoot the message.
Well, yeah, I know, but...
What's the penalty?
Yeah, none.
With the DEM?
I'll tell you what the penalty's open.
What's the penalty?
The penalty would be TVs are gonna be smashed all over everybody's property.
No, 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 no. If in fact, if in fact, you took what you have to Coventry, what's the penalty to the town of Warwick?
I, I don't wanna put Coventry in that position, first of all, I mean, I work good with them, and they're taking what I have a little at a time, so we're not overloading them.
Think what I'm saying, if it takes you one truckload to take what you have to Coventry, it takes the six of us, six truckloads, you're saying that Coventry's gonna take it from the six of us and our own pickup trucks, but won't take it from you?
Yes.
Says who?
That's what the law they come down with.
What law?
It's a regulation.
It's a rule and reg, this is a rule and regulations, no hearings then? They asked for hearings, were there hearings?
Oh, there probably was.
Not that I know of, it's just within Rhode Island Resource Recovery they come up with this.
Yeah, but they're, they're subject to the same rules of...
Because they don't have any place to get rid of the electronics either.
Rules and regulations?
The new bus, paint it.
I don't know, we're taking away another service, we, people do use it, right? They weren't using it.
I thought it was a great service.
Now it's not there anymore. Uh, and you're gonna deal with them, they come down to the yard, and they got all this stuff in the back of their, of their station wagon, say, go to Coventry.
We had one woman come in today with...
And they'll say, okay, go down a half a mile, they'll dump it on, uh, Leewer's or something, right? Or East Greenwich Ave, or somewhere like that.
The woman that came down today with a TV and a toaster, she was more than happy to drive to Coventry and drop it off, but that's not gonna happen all the time.
No.
I mean, I thought it was a good service we were providing, we had an outlet for the stuff, and everybody was happy.
David, the product's still gonna be there, it's, there's still, people still have to get rid of it.
Yep.
So why, why isn't someone getting involved to keep this service for the people? Because we know what's gonna happen, if you don't pick up the, the mattresses, what happened to the mattresses?
Rhode Island Resources Recovery is looking for an outlet to get rid of this, but right now, there is no outlet to get rid of this stuff.
But that's immaterial, because...
That's not helping us.
Because it's not helping us, we, you still, they're still gonna have a Coventry depot where people can get rid of it, so they, they have that issue no matter what.
And then you're gonna explain...
So if we drop ours off as a, as a, uh, like a communal thing, lack of another word...
And how you gonna explain that as a constituent?
We just drop off the whole pod over there.
That Coventry can take it and we can't.
Can't, they said cannot drop off, municipalities cannot collect it and drop it off at these...
Because they know individuals aren't gonna do it.
Right.
Will let us do it, I mean, what can I tell ya?
Somebody's gonna get a fee out of this.
So we're taking a little bit at a time to get it off.
Be looking to it, be looking to it, please.
I'm gonna talk with the EM director and Resource Recovery about this, Fred. Why, why we're on this subject, um, do we have any plans for having, residents are fine with the way garbage is going, but the concern is, you know, they work Monday through Friday, and they have bulk, that they wanna, they'll bring it down, but they have no place to put it on a Saturday or Sunday, because we're closed on Saturday and Sunday. Uh, we'd look in and possibly open it up on Saturdays for like, uh, seven to noon or something to that extent, because a lot of residents...
We don't take bulk, we don't take bulk at the, we can't store, uh...
They don't have any storage for it.
At the DPW.
Large plastics and all that?
No, plastics we can take, but, uh, bulk items and stuff like that has to be picked up on a bulk pickup, mattresses, yeah. We, we take the mattresses.
You have, you have two ways of charging a, a resident for a mattress, they can drop it off for ten dollars, or you can pick it up for four.
For twenty, yep.
They can't drop it off for ten dollars because they're closed, you're closed on Saturday and Sunday, so if they are working Monday through Friday, the only day they can drop this mattress off is on a Saturday, what do they do? They just throw it in front of your building?
We haven't really had any problems with people dropping it off.
You haven't had a problem because you haven't been open, so they don't, what people are saying because you're not open, that they can't do it. Now, it's gonna get worse and worse as the spring comes on, people are gonna say, what do I do with my bulk? Can I bring it down to the DPW? I said you open seven to three-thirty, but again, people work till four, five, six, and Monday through Friday, it's, it's...
To be honest with you, we haven't had any, anyone call and say that they couldn't make it down and it's, during the week and get it.
If you look at Coventry's schedule, they're open six days a week, and they are a transfer station, that's...
Again, we're gonna, we're gonna have time and a half, we're gonna have more, more, more money?
You ask somebody work Tuesday through Saturday instead of Monday through Friday, you know, that's, just a schedule change.
You could, you could change that around to...
I'm just throwing it out there in case you start seeing it, because...
No, up till now, it hasn't really been an issue. Those are the new stickers. You'll start, you'll see them all over town, they're all over, they're all over Phoenix Avenue and Main Street, now you must've seen some of them.
Very nice, good idea.
But...
But...
It was a but.
Well, no, no but, I mean, you kept them to size for a reason, they're gonna see them, they're bright orange. You, you say these are, let's see, this item was not picked up, one, two, three, four, fine, you can check off whatever it is, or they can figure it out.
We circle the number.
You circle, okay, but there's nothing on here about telling them, take it off the damn sidewalk and put it in your yard until pickup.
The information number is on there, plus when we put 'em on, we record the address, so if they don't call within one to two days, we have the address, we call up.
Oh, so this is, oh, this is, so this is an order, please contact us, not like, if you want to, contact us. Okay, see, so you're expecting them to contact you, so, all right.
Well, you know they're gonna call because they're gonna have the stuff left over.
And they have been.
They're gonna call and yell.
No, what they'll do is they'll, they'll do it right, but they'll leave it out there until...
No, well, she tells them...
The night before they have to be picked up.
Either the hold speaks to them, or I speak to them, we tell them, listen, this item's a bulk item, but you can't put it out till the day of the pickup.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, you gotta take it in off there.
Good idea, though, David, but, uh, are we having a problem with people leaving out, putting their garbage out too early?
They're not taking them off the sidewalks, week to week.
No, 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 I, I mean, I, I see that all around town.
Yeah, a few will.
Don't go there, why, you doing it?
I don't think the garbage, I wonder you nuts? That's why sons are for, no, people do, because they get, they get, they get into a, a regulation, I mean, excuse me, uh, routine, that if it's on Monday, regardless of where they lived in the past, it always goes on on Monday, 'cause that's what they do, you never got a break about that.
Well, yeah, we are, if we find them, like we're supposed to.
The only thing I'm seeing a lot of...
My neighbors don't wanna see the garbage put out on Thursday night for Monday morning, they don't wanna see it. And we have ordinances that should prevent that.
I got problems where they're not bringing in the cans, they're just...
Oh, yeah, they leave the cans out, that's, yeah.
Those cans are great, those are...
And the biggest culprit's a Brookfield plant.
I, I don't wanna, I don't really wanna find them, I wanna educate them.
Yeah, well, that's, that's why, when they're calling, we're explaining it to them.
We, we had, we had some broken chairs out in somebody's, uh, house for a month before I finally called you and you took care of it. A month!
Yeah, and as soon as she went over there and knocked on the door, they, they fixed it right away.
I know, but it was there a month before someone saw it, Dave, it was right on the thoroughfare, as soon as you drive down, you couldn't help but not see it.
A person can take their trash can five feet off the curb and enter the edge of their property, and it's legal.
That's okay, that's fine, but come spring, when people wanna use the sidewalks to walk, and they're gonna have to walk outside in the street, that's illegal, too. I just want you to enforce what's on the books, that's all, sort of like, sort of like illegal immigration. Oh, my God.
Now you're talking, buddy, trump all the way.
All right, let's go.
Thanks, David, it, it, very good, though, very good idea.
Anything else, Fred, 'cause your minutes are going way over.
I, I know, well, they just keep going on, just one last item, just to let you know that, um, we did a, um, we're in the process of applying to, uh, the state, they had the new, um, building infrastructure...
Rhode Island Infrastructure.
Rhode Island Infrastructure Bond, that we said that we were gonna, um, took the ban on the, uh, the banned, uh, bond anticipation notes for the turbines, in hopes that we can apply to this fund to, at the lower rate, so we're in the process, those applications are due later this week, so just to let you know, we, we are still on that, we're also looking at wrapping in some of our other projects, like, um, improvements to the Civic Center, improvements to DPW building, um, energy improvements, and also, um, the, uh, streetlights, maybe wrapping in the work for the streetlights in that ban as well, so, into that grant as well, so...
School department's doing that as well.
In the school department, yeah, we're doing this combination with them. Pretty quick turnaround, I think, they're looking at reviewing and probably, um, sometime in, in February, making the announcement, so I think it's gonna go pretty quickly.
They expect the financing to be available sometime in May or June, which would coincide with when the turbines are expected to be online, but we have time on the bands.
Are they behind? They said June, online?
Yeah, they'll be on...
Are they behind?
No, that's, that's...
They said first quarter, end of first quarter.
We, we were anticipating...
February.
May, June timeframe, well, the, the turbines come in.
I do, too.
Yeah.
How's it going?
Going well, we were just out there, uh, Friday, John and I went out.
Taking any pictures?
Uh, Jim Hummel went out and took video, so, it'll be on the...
On the Hummel Report?
The Hummel Reports, and they're doing a story on it, um, and, uh, all the foundations are complete, they've got the, uh, the base rings out there, the, all the, um, uh, the switch, all the switches and all the, um, generators and things are, are, are on, on the facility, are at the site now.
Is the grid integration done?
Yep, all the lines are run, everything's ready to go, so basically, next step is the, um, the towers come in, and then the turbines come in, and they just put it together, so... Hey, you know, came up quickly, that's all I have.
That's great.
Don't speak in from the crowd, I want you to go to the microphone, please.
Identify yourself. Miss Kendra.
Any questions for Fred? Thank you, Fred.
Oh, yes.
Oh, come on, man.
No, no, it's something that you said you were gonna bring to us, uh, did you talk about the Centennial Commission from the Rhode Island Foundation yet, and the grants that they're offering?
Oh, yeah, you're right, no, I did not.
See, did you hear that?
What was that again?
There's a, there's a small grant, um, from Rhode Island Foundation for their centennial, um, celebration, they're offering between five and fifteen thousand dollar grants to communities or nonprofit organizations, and it can be for any, um, improvements to do with public spaces, they can be, um, arts-related.
Tree?
Could be a tree, could be, uh, you know, anything that improves public space, improves access, improves, um, programming, uh, for people. So we've been looking at, um, in our director's meeting, um, this past week, I asked the directors to bring forth ideas, um, there's some suggestions for improvements to, um, the gazebo, uh, because I know that the Arctic Playhouse wants to use it for, um, plays, like, uh, Shakespeare, um, plays in the summer, um, there's, um, suggestions for, uh, Phoenix Square, and for some of the memorials as well, that are going inline, uh, soon, both the Station Fire and the Policeman's Memorial, um, Ed, you have...
Well, I thought, I thought the, the grant, I read it on, online, I thought it was a little bit more, more expansive than what you just said. I had recommended, you know, it's, it's between the guarantee, between fifteen to five, uh, fifteen thousand dollars to every municipality in the state, all right? They're gonna, they're guaranteeing that, and I mean, one of the things that I thought that we're gonna get sooner or later, and would fit within that category, was, and we almost bought it, but we didn't have the funding, was, uh, of the portable streaming device, where you could now, like, if you have events around town, or if you have an event at the, uh, uh, the, the high school, a meeting at the high school, you'd, right now, we can't, we won't be able to stream it, this stuff is fixed.
This same system would be available portable.
We would be able to use this system, we probably could lend it out to, to the school, too, and probably, I think, for everything, for the camera and everything, it probably would come to between ten to fifteen thousand dollars, it's actually like a military-style laptop, but it has everything all built in, and then you have the camera. So I thought, that, what it does is absolutely promotes transparency in government, and I think that's one of the things that Rhode Island Foundation...
And it can be used for, like you said, the school, the plays and all kinds of events, tree lighting.
Plays, uh, or if we did something, tree lighting, anything at the gazebo, just out in the field, you could go out in the field, you wanna show something, uh, you know, to the public, you could record and stream it afterwards, so I just thought it would, it fits within the, the dollar amount, and I think that it, it could be broadly used by, you know, uh, the equipment, by many people in town, uh, but it would also be appreciated, and, and, uh, the product from it viewed by thousands of people in town, so I thought it might be a good fit.
Absolutely, and, and it is eligible within the...
Yeah, I thought it was eligible, yeah, so that's what, what I had, uh, recommended.
All right, sure.
So, how's, how do you make the decision?
You can put in for multiple things, but it's really gonna come down to, um, the direction of the council, if there's a certain way that you feel, you know, you want us to go, we'll put in the grant for that, if you want us to support any group in town, you know, we'd be happy to do that as well.
Oh, my pitch is to, and the purpose of, I think the purpose of the grant is to impact...
Yep.
The most people as possible, you might wanna reread it, uh, that's the purpose of the grant. Uh, another...
February, I wanna say...
Pretty soon, eleventh, was it, maybe?
Yeah, something like that, about two weeks.
Yeah. Well, I'm sure there's some preparation in the grant, too, and, you know, so, you don't wanna do it, when's our next meeting?
Second, February second is the next meeting.
Does that give you enough time?
Yeah, I mean, if we have a rough, uh, idea of narrowing it down, we should have enough time to put that together, it's not a, it's not a huge application.
No. Matter of fact, I, I got the idea that basically anybody could try, could put in for it, you know, even a citizen, for their community.
Yeah, I know art, artists can and things like that, and...
Okay, thank you.
Two thousand and fifteen dash eighteen, second reading, sponsored by Council President Goslin, and ordinance amending section eleven point five dash seven, jurisdiction of the town, of the West Warwick Code of Ordinances.
I'll move the ordinance.
Second, moving second, this is the second reading, um, I think I was saying last time to, to explain, so, again, it's just so we can be in coinciding with the, uh, ordinance here. Does anybody have any questions on this? Nothing has changed since, uh, compliance with state law, doesn't state law, correct. Anybody, any public comment on this? Fair enough, roll call vote, Brian?
Yes.
Angelo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Verizon New England and Narragansett Electric resolved that the town council hereby approves the petition from Verizon New England Incorporated and Narragansett Electric Company to place one new joint pole for South James Street on the northerly side of Bank Street in the town of West Warwick.
I'll move the resolution.
One second, wasn't this the same thing that was on the agenda last time?
Yeah.
Yeah, you tabled it because of the issues with the poles in the Phoenix area, um...
That was tabled?
We didn't table it.
We didn't table it, we just moved on.
You just moved on?
No action.
Okay, so I don't know why it's back on then?
Yeah.
Isn't it the same thing?
Yeah.
Well, the, the last one, I think, was also an access point, but again, I, I just wanna go back, here we are, a month later, and the same poles have not been...
Well, there's been a lot of work done on those poles, so there's, the transfer of the lines have been done, and they're supposed to be coming back out now.
I wanna clarify what happened with those poles. They put them in and did not let any other utility, any utility company know that they were being put in.
Correct.
And if it wasn't for Joe Argenti, and I gave him contacts for Cox Communications, and he also has his contacts at National Grid, all the emails that flew, flew around and were discussed about the matter, all these poles been put in, and not one utility company was ever notified. I mean, we need to make sure Verizon's doing their job, and, and when they're putting these poles in, I know they subcontracted out now, but how can we go? I mean, they were put in in early April, ma- March, some of them, depending on the weather, but definitely April, where they were put in, and here we are in January, going into February, and these poles haven't been removed.
Yeah, but all the dirt, the worst part is the dirt in the people's yachts.
And, and here we are, snow last weekend, and now we're gonna have possibly a big storm this weekend, and, you know, it's, people can't even clear off the sidewalks to, to follow the ordinance, so, I mean, kudos to Joe, Joe's doing a great job with that, but I think a letter from the council to Verizon, basically stating that, you know, we need to get these poles resolved, I mean...
Is there some kind of ordinance that we can pass if they don't listen to us, where we can actually find them?
No.
Why? Why?
State law and the Public Utilities Commission and most of the rules and regulations prohibit municipalities from doing exactly that, because if that was available to municipalities, it probably would've been done thirty or forty years ago. I can look into it, but I'm pretty sure that prior councils had made similar requests and found that it's just a dead end. You can't usurp what's already in the Public Utilities Commission law, rules, regulations.
So, as Fred said earlier, all the work's been done to those poles. The only ones we're waiting for now is Verizon. And it goes like that.
You can make things more difficult for each of the individual utilities, but along the line, they're gonna get what they want.
To make it clear, when a pole goes in, the pole gets replaced by the contracting company that Verizon hires, or Verizon themselves. National Grid does the first pole transfer. Cox Communications does the second pole transfer. Verizon does the third and takes the pole with them. But if Verizon's stolen the poles, doesn't tell anybody else what's going on, it just sits there.
And sometimes our fire department has to-
That's probably more in tune to some enabling legislation that would make the utilities to all the municipalities, not just West Warwick, put the other utilities or providers unnoticed, that if something was gonna happen, they'd have the opportunity to react. And I don't think you're gonna be able to do it via an ordinance, because it's just, you're gonna be usurping state law, rules, and regulations that municipalities can't do.
I mean, Goslin Court, I know that wasn't on there, but the one at the corner summit in Goslin Court, that pole's been sitting there, and Mr. Joquin keeps his property immaculate over there, but yet now he's got a pile of dirt, a pole tilting this way, that's mounted to the other pole. And that's not one of them that was on the list. But that's been there since April. You know, it's just, North Pleasant Street, same thing.
Those are all done.
North Pleasant was done, but they're just waiting on Verizon.
Well, have you wanted us to inquire?
Yeah. Might pass that full time. Joe, like I said, Joe's doing a good job. Joe, Joe does. Do you also want us to address the possible enabling legislation? Yeah. Thank you. All in favor on this matter?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Cancellation of taxes. Resolve that the attached cancellation of taxes in the amount of six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents in accordance with Title forty-four dash seven dash fourteen, as authorized by the tax collector of the town of West Warwick, and presented for the approval of the Town Council, is hereby approved. Original list is on file in the office of the tax collector.
I'll move the resolution.
Moving second, any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
A resolution memorializing the General Assembly to enact legislation authorizing the Town Council of West Warwick to exempt from taxation map six, lot five twenty-eight, map six, lot five thirty-one, map six, lot one seventy-one, to be used by Tides Family Services, sponsored by Council Vice President Giroux.
I'll move the resolution.
Second. Moving second. Actually, Councilman Giroux, I, this was something that Paula had put on the agenda, and I know you had Tides here. She had it on based on the Town Council, but I told her that you supported, you brought this before the Town Council, so for your sponsor. I think we met probably, what, November?
Yep.
And this is just supporting legislation.
Yeah, so we've reached out to Representative Serpa, and she's gonna submit the legislation. In fact, they're doing this, they've got sites throughout the state, and they're doing it as probably one large piece of legislation for Tides.
Yeah, I think they got another one in Pawtucket, maybe?
Pawtucket, yeah. And so-
So this is the follow-up from back in November, where we thought we could do it ourselves?
Yeah.
And it turned out that we can, we can't. So-
But they need the resolution and learn from it.
Right, yeah. Rep. Serpa wants the resolution to make sure that's okay with us, and that's what this does. And the use of it's not changing at all. And the way it's worded, too, it's, I mean, if they do change the use, then go to revert back to go on the tax laws. Sorry, recommend passage.
Any public discussion? Fair and non, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Resignation from Board of Tenant Affairs. Resolve that the Town Council hereby acknowledges the resignation of Joseph Dwight of the West Warwick Board of Tenant Affairs for the town of West Warwick.
I'll move the resolution.
Moving second, any discussion?
Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
No, go ahead.
Well, no, I'm just concerned that the two good people here are, have turned in their, have turned in their resignation, and their letters were very, I don't know what the word is, turd. I mean, it was like, don't wanna have anything to do with it.
Immediately.
Correct. Turs, turs.
Okay, thank you. And these are two good people. We appointed them, I don't think they've been on there for much more than a year, if that. But both Joe and the next one, Judy, I'm surprised. I do have a call-in with Joe. He hasn't returned the phone call as of when I came here to the meeting, and to find out, you know, what's going on. And, you know, I will find out, but again, I'm disappointed. I wanna thank Joe and Judy for their service, for the time that they were on there. And they're great advocates anyway, in that particular building. And I'm sure they'll continue to be.
Well, I think part of it has to do with, we kinda broke the foundation of that board, because, and take this as a compliment, but the council moved Deb Taco-
Deb Taco to the Housing Authority, where a lot of these individuals felt comfortable in how hard Deb worked, and when Deb moved over to Housing Authority, that they were concerned with the board at that point. So, you know, we move one on to another, but again, it's from, and I haven't talked to either one of these individuals, but it doesn't seem like they have a leader at this point. And that could be a possibility of what's going on. Joe Machado has called me. I have talked to Janice Pacico. And, you know, it's, they're concerned with the board, because the board has moved in a direction where they have worked hard for the tenants, and they've actually been a little more recognized, and they've been more involved, because there was a period of time, there was no involvement from BODA. And over the past couple of years, there's been some involvement, and now they feel the board's just breaking up. And I don't know what their feelings are, but I'm just going by speaking to Janice, Joe Machado, Deb Taco. It's just, you know, I, as I said earlier, that, you know, it's a board I don't wanna see fall apart, but hopefully we get the proper people in there to also fulfill their seats. There has been a few letters. There's, I think, three names that have applied now.
Two.
I think there's a third one also. I just haven't gotten it yet. So hopefully, and again, I wanna thank Mr. Dwight and Ms. Jackson for the time that they served on the board. I know it hasn't been easy over there on all ends. It's been sometimes contentious, especially how the tenants sometimes can get. And also, I know there was some issues between the Housing Authority and BODA, and a challenge of having a director in place, so on and so forth. So, you know, hopefully, like I said, we get the right people in there. Any other comment on Mr. Dwight? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Resignation from Board of Tenant Affairs. Resolve that the Town Council hereby acknowledges the resignation of Judith Jackson of the West Warwick Board of Tenant Affairs for the town of West Warwick.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, same thing. If we could just send a thank you letter to Ms. Jackson, let her know, thank you for her time. Also, while we're on that, Brian, I know when we talked earlier about other issues, that was the other thing that we wanted to put on for the charter change, was Board of Tenant Affairs, that we had one from Clyde and one from Robin Street, for the next election to go on the ballot. So, I just wanna remind you, so I don't forget.
Any other comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Appointment for Board of Tenant Affairs public. Resolve that the Town Council hereby appoints the following individual to serve as a member of the Board of Tenant Affairs for the town of West Warwick, with a term to expire to two thousand and seventeen.
I'll move the resolution.
Moving second. We have three names here. And one is Colleen Limerick. One is Elaine Marsh, and one is Rebecca Ponte. Rebecca Ponte lives in Ed's Ward. Ms. Marsh lives in Ed's Ward. And Ms. Limerick lives in Dave's Ward from looks at Manchester Street, yours?
They're in the manors. I know them both. I know-
You know Colleen?
No, I don't, that's the only one. Rebecca Ponte's in the Sons of Italy on the board, very efficient. Elaine Marsh is our secretary, very efficient, would be a plus on that board, but that's your ward. I know them two personally.
Well, the Board of Tenant Affairs is, yeah.
They're in the, they're in the manors.
Actually, they're in Wildberry.
Yeah, I mean, I've gotta tell you the truth. These are all very good qualified candidates. So these, this is great. The only one I've been able to find some information about is, I've actually had a couple of calls recommending Colleen. I haven't had a chance to talk to Colleen yet, but they were glowing recommendations for Colleen. Even though she's not from my ward, it doesn't necessarily bother me, you know, as long as, you know, that she's someone that listens and gets along with people, and is a strong advocate. That's what's most important. I think maybe all three could be. But, I mean, again, I'm gonna be honest, I'm leaning toward Colleen, because I have had, not a lot, but a few calls. When I get any calls like that, it's-
I don't know, I don't know Colleen personally, but I know that Ward Four is always lacking in their representation on boards like this, just because we don't have a lot of candidates. So.
When's the next opening on?
Next. There's two openings.
There's two, yeah. Okay. But we have, there's actually three.
There's two now, because of the resignations, but I think there's another one coming up, too. Well, you have Debbie Taco's position.
Right.
You have the two that just resigned.
These are great.
I know them two older ladies were very well.
Yeah. I don't know the, I know Deb, you can talk to me later, but I don't know the welfare of one of the individuals. So, there could be four openings. Yeah. Actually, and I know two have been in and out of the hospital. So, you know, depending on them.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we could do that, 'cause we're gonna have three.
Yeah.
And I, great, great individuals here.
Yeah. Let's appoint them.
I mean, I'd like, I'd like to, I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to see Colleen appointed to one of them, but maybe we could appoint her, you know, to another opening that's coming up, Debbie's. But, yeah, I mean, any of these, any of these are good. The one that lives in the manor, that's a plus, you know. That's Elaine, isn't it?
Elaine, and Becky.
And Becky. Wow, it's tough when you have-
Well, you're gonna have three, Ed. I mean, you know, with Joe Ward-
Do we have any more requests for the second one? Are these all, all we got, for people interested? There's only three for the- Oh, okay, all right. Well, let's start off then. Let's, I'd like to nominate Elaine Marsh.
I'll second it.
So one of the appointments. Keep everybody happy this time. It's unusual. You have, who'd you pick?
Elaine.
Elaine Marsh. Yeah.
I have a motion for Elaine Marsh, a second by Angelo. Any other comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Can we also keep their applications? If there's another appointment, that way they're, they don't have to reapply.
Yeah, well, we've only got two tonight.
Yeah.
Right? How do we have two, when two people resign tonight?
You have two. And you need Debbie, you got an opening with Debbie Taco's thing, that should've been on here.
That's what I'm saying. What time, how could you have two when they just resigned tonight? I don't understand the timing factor on that.
Is it, yeah, it was advertised last month, so it's three times, and then you can appoint her within the next two years.
She started advertising, and they just didn't want her to make an appointment?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, so we can only appoint two tonight.
Two tonight.
All right. I'd like to, I'd like to, David, I think you wanna nominate somebody, maybe?
Yeah, that's fine. I'll move the name of Colleen Limerick.
Second.
Moving second. We just had this discussion. Any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
I think in this situation, just 'cause we know we have upcoming, it might not be a bad idea to maybe send a letter, informally letting Rebecca know that we know we have upcoming appointments.
No.
Which will be on the next, will be on the next agenda, I would assume, wouldn't it? Yes, no?
Should be. Yeah, you gotta, you gotta do it two more times.
Yeah.
So this is, you gotta do it two more, no, this is the second time, next is three.
Well, we're gonna have it on the agenda as soon as possible.
Yeah.
Mary Ann, Councilman Kenahan has something for you.
Yeah, can we just send a letter or either a phone call to Rebecca Ponte and just let her know that there is a third opening and that we were only able to appoint two, but we're not-
We're still considering-
We're not denying her. She's still in, under consideration for that third.
She's still under consideration. Can't promise, but under consideration.
Yep.
Okay, next one.
Appointment for the Pension Board. Resolve the Town Council hereby appoints the following individual to serve as a member for the Pension Board for the town of West Warwick, for a term to expire eleven eighteen sixteen.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, discussion?
Move the name of Jeffrey Coslin.
Second.
I have a motion for Jeffrey Coslin, second. Any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Just to report, that was, we did take a vote in executive session.
Yes.
And that was the vote.
Yeah. Again, all good candidates. I mean, it was, this is the first time that I can remember where we took the time to interview and discuss and make a decision.
I thought it was a rewarding process, meeting the candidates.
But all great candidates, and thank you, everyone, for participating.
Also, there, just to make it clear, there has been discussion from the council to, and also during negotiations, to up the pension board either to seven members or nine members. That could be a discussion or a vote on the ballot for two thousand and sixteen.
Appointment for the Pawtucket River Authority. Resolve that the Town Council hereby appoints the following individual to serve as a member of the Pawtucket River Authority for the town of West Warwick for a three-year term. Michael Bedard?
Well, Bedard. I'll move the resolution in the name of Mike Bedard. Mike, oh, I need a second.
That's it.
Second.
Second.
He's the only one to put in, but he's a good fit. I spoke to Bob Nero. Bedard works for the sewer plant. He's up to date on all the water, so he'll make a good fit there.
Yeah, I agree with Councilman Bedula. I've known Michael a longtime upstanding guy. I think he'd do a great job on that board.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Ward reports.
Ward, five. Start here and quick, 'cause there's not much going on. Been reviewing the last two weeks for what roads I'm looking to have done in advance of the road bond coming available, to get that in the works. That's really about it.
Four.
I spoke with Dave quickly before the meeting. We had, looking at putting in some drainage on Coite Avenue, and he got a proposal, I believe, that was in. And I just, I spoke with him, and he's gonna speak with Fred, and we are gonna move ahead towards the bid process for that. And hopefully, that can alleviate one of the major puddles that form on Coite Avenue anytime there's a rain or snow event. So, other than that, that's it.
Your area over there looks pretty good over there, the four corners.
Yeah, aside from the asphalt.
Did they change the street sign, though? There was a street sign that said, it said, what's the name of that street?
Said New London Avenue was on Main Street.
Yeah, it's still pointing down to Main Street, and it's New London Avenue.
It's been made as soon as it could, it was a little smaller.
Okay, thank you.
It's in the mail, right, Dave?
All right. Three.
I'm starting the same thing, starting to look at streets. I know one of my priorities this year is to spend a boatload of money down at Pon Street area, where all those people have been suffering for years, flooding basements, flooded streets. It's the reason why they call it Pon Street. I've got pictures, as a matter of fact, over the years of a lake down there. So, and I'm committed to trying to mitigate as much of it as we can for the money that we have, and still have money left over to do other roads, too. Fortunately, I think we're in fairly good shape from our last road repair, but there's always, always things to be done. Also, snow's coming, they think. Maybe, maybe not. We didn't ask you about that, Dave, you know, how prepared we are for this coming weekend. But I think it's important. Couple of things, oops, sorry. Couple of things is I get phone calls all the time of missed streets. It happens, but, you know, I've assured them that when it happens, we'll act quickly, get it done. I know it happens every year. It happens for whatever reason. Someone's new, they get tired, they forget about it, whatever. And I know you get the-
And I know you get the phone calls, but I get the phone calls, too. So, you know, if we could, you know, pay attention to that this year as much as we can. Parking bans, chief, parking bans, I'd like us to be as aggressive as possible, you know, with a little bit of compassion.
Well, that was...
Not this much compassion, though, just a little bit of compassion, all right? Because we need those, we need those cars off the roads, so David's guys can do their job.
I was just looking, I was just listening to Channel 10 News, Fall River has a new process that they're putting in all their trucks. It was actually for their contractors and their employees. It actually tells you how many times they actually go down, up and down the street. There's a camera in the truck. It's also used for time and labor. When their contractors are done, they don't, it, it basically tells them they're done, you know, it shows them where they are. So, Dave, something you wanna take a look at, what Fall River's doing, if, you know, maybe it's something feasible for West Warwick, you know, it's, you know, when somebody says, "Oh, you haven't come down my street all night."
It's GPS.
Well, yeah, yes, yes, we have, you know.
You look through a number of different things, it all comes together.
I was gonna say, take a, take a look at what Fall River's doing. I think it's a nice plan.
We're doing that with the sewer plant now, GPS, for pennies. I mean, I think Fred's gonna mention it to them. I mean, it's, it's pennies on a dollar, right, exactly. It's going into effect in the sewer plant very shortly, so...
Dave, you had something real quick?
Yeah, just quickly back to four, Revere Ave, off of 117. Kent County Water's been working there.
Suicide Hill.
Yeah, it looks like Frankenstein Road, like there's going up the left side, cutting across the sides, going up the right side. Just, I wanna double check and make sure that we're paying attention. What's the paving situation look like?
They're gonna pave that.
I'm gonna tell you the paving plans.
But we're at a weird time in the winter, so like, so the road's gonna look the way it is until the plant's open.
I would say so.
But the contractor, I, by experience in Ward One, the contract, I think that was Boyle and Fogarty. Any damage or anything, they will pay.
Yeah.
You just contact Boyer and he'll get a hold of it.
It looks like they've been trying to do their best, but I mean, you can only do so much, because I mean, I drive down it and it's still bumpy, but, okay. Just, I just wanna know what the timeframe's gonna look like.
And I just wanna ask Dave and Fred, we've got sidewalks gonna get cleaned heading up to the high school, right? No children are gonna have to walk in the road. We're gonna be proactive with that, right? And are we using the numbering on trucks again this year?
Yes.
Because residents seem to like that, to be able to call out a truck number.
Hell of an idea that was, huh?
Yeah.
Good thing you thought of that, Lombardi.
That counts.
The numbers on the trucks.
Ward two. We just got done with, well, I think we're almost all done, thanks to the weather, holding off till January. We had a major drainage structure being redeveloped over on Pleasant Street and, what's the name of that side street, Dave? Snell's Court. There's a lot of drainage in there. It was kinda like pre-approved road bond money, I guess, if you wanna call it that. But it was a ma, it was a major drainage issue over there, and there was four houses that were, if it rained, they weren't allowed out, because it was just a giant retention pond for them. So, that's been resolved, hopefully. Renadette Street, Dave, I know I brought it up to you, they put the sewer line in on Renadette to tie in for a resident. Since they've done that, the road has sunk, and I'm just afraid, we paved that road less than three years ago, four years ago, and I'm just afraid, once the plows stop plowing, they're gonna rip that road from where they dug and it sunk.
The contractor's aware of it, it's already been attached twice, right?
Yeah. Well, it's gonna keep sinking, because it wasn't packed, it wasn't compacted, right? You know, he's getting away with kind of not doing curb-to-curb over there, which I think should have been done, but it's too late. So, that's all I have for two. One?
Uh, one's quiet. The only thing, like everyone else, we're looking at a few streets that I missed, mostly from last bond, and Kent County Water did quite a few and doubled up and did them twice. But, yeah, just picking a few streets, and Dave, you know, I know I got that Crestwood, that's half a street, Crossland, that's half a street. I don't know, I drive through, if you see any, just let me know what's, what's bad, what's not. I like to look at them sightings, the cement that the town dug all up in Tanglewood, see if we could do something with that, because it looks pretty crappy.
So, Angelo doesn't have any roads to do, we can take his money.
Oh, no. I'll find stuff to do, don't worry about that. That's, yeah, it's already spent, it's right, and then some. Plus, I don't know, Brian's gotta give 30,000 a piece or 40,000 a piece. So, we got an extra 40 there.
Just 'cause you're a predecessor, did it, you know, you're still gonna pay back your debt. That's all I have. All right. Thank you.
Financial update, general fund.
A lot of numbers on that sheet, Jim.
Yes, there are. There are a lot of accounts in our, in our chart of accounts for both the revenues and expenses. As requested, I did provide the council with some financial statements through December 31st. I am still working on some projections to see how the, how we expect the fiscal year to go. However, judging by the numbers and the percentages indicated here, we're running what you would expect, just about a 50% mark through December, as, as we would hope. I just wanted to point out a couple of things that I noticed in looking at the report, and as part of my projections, I'll, I'll provide to the council at a later date. I did notice that the, both the clerk revenue and the building revenue is actually higher than what a half a year would show, but some of that could be seasonal, but that's a good sign that, that will meet that budget number. I did also notice that the fire rescue revenue, which was previously, at the end of last fiscal year, was a little bit lower than last year. I'm happy to report that the July and August, as, as expected, those numbers are up, so in a whole, or as a whole, I would expect that the fire rescue revenue will be better this year than what last, what last year's numbers did show. The collections themselves, the receivables actually is up substantially from last year, which would mean we would expect that the revenues would be, would be better. In terms of the, the current year taxes, the first quarter tends to be the highest amount of collections that we have, because we have mortgage companies that pay the full balance versus quarterly. But those revenues are actually running a little bit better than 50% in terms of the actual, what's budgeted, than, you know, what you would have through December. But again, we still have the third quarter collections that we're going through right now, as well as the fourth quarter, and we'll see how those results, how those results look, as well as the July and August collections, the 60-day number that will accrue back to this fiscal year. If you remember in my previous report, that number was down last year versus the previous year, so we're hopeful that this year, we can ramp up the collections in July and August and accrue some of that money back to rebound from the previous year. But again, that's a timing issue, just like with the rescue, that we will expect that we will collect the monies. Other things on the revenue side, like I said, the department revenues are still running in line with what was, what was budgeted, so that's a good sign. Moving over to the expense side, again, we're just about that 50% mark, as you would expect, and you will see on the report that was attached to the agenda, that you do have percentages by line on them, as well as in total, so you can actually see where that's running. Just quickly looking at it, most of the departments are right around that 50% mark, as you would expect halfway through the year, with salaries and benefits being a chunk of it. Getting to the general government portion of it, I did wanna point out that the, in terms of the pension contribution, this report shows through December 31st, we had only made one payment, or the first quarter payment as of that date, but on July the 7th, we actually made the second contribution to the pension system, and on the 12th of, I'm sorry, January, and on the 12th of January, we actually made one half of the, of the OPEB deposit into the trust account, which was in line with the budget. So, again, we're continuing to address both the pension and the OPEB obligations, as we had previously indicated. The other item worth noting that you will see on this report is that the capital budget shows that that money has been fully expended, but it has not been fully expended. It's been expended or recorded on the general fund, but we've moved that into a separate capital reserve, so to speak, so any of the monies that are not spent in one year will be automatically carried over within that fund. So, what we do is we basically clear it out of the general fund, put it into that capital fund, and it's there designated the same way it was designated by the budget. So, that will help to grow those pots year over year, versus having to do a year-end entry to get it out of the general fund. It's better accounting, and it's a lot easier to maintain it in a separate fund, and then you truly have a reserve for capital improvements that we can report on, versus just have it be part of the general fund. Let's see, what else? Now, health and dental, we are using a self-insurance fund model, so therefore you see 50% spent through the year, and that was a transfer actually to the self-insurance fund, which is where the claims are getting processed from. So, that was another move that we, or another change that we made to the budget and to the accounting, so that, that separate fund would be almost like a reserve, so as the claims did fluctuate, you'd have a fund that was handling it, versus the general fund having to worry about either a surplus or a surplus. That's pretty much as far as highlights go.
Any questions for John on that portion, because I know he's gonna get into portion number two?
Yep. Go on, general fund for a time, Dave? Good. Moving on to the civic center. What I have here for the council, I'll hand out, is a copy of a budget actual for what's been through December 31st, as well as a budget that we can actually discuss. Trying to save some paper here.
Ah, thank you.
The page that I flipped to is actually a year-to-date through December 31st. What it shows is both the expenses and the revenues, and you'll see that, if you look at the numbers, the expenses actually have exceeded the revenues by $30,000, but that is not a bad sign, considering that we put in approximately $110,000 to $115,000 of upfront costs to get it operational. So, that basically shows, again, snapshot as of December, what the, what the numbers looked like and what the money was being spent on, as well as the different revenue sources they were identified here, being the ice rink, concession stand, field house.
John, we're gonna get the details on this like I asked for?
I have detailed reports that I can, that I can provide.
Yeah, no, when I see ice rink and I see revenues, I want, I want the breakdown, I wanna know who's, who's paying up there.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I had, I had asked for that. Yeah, this is good. It's good considering it's our first year.
Again, my apologies, when you were saying detail, I thought you were looking for line-by-line detail versus the actual expenditure, so I do apologize for that.
On the expenses, I want, on the expenses, I wanna know where we're paying out to.
Absolutely. We can provide that, and as I had previously mentioned, we do have a login that we did set up for the council, in the event you do wanna take a look at any of the numbers, so I'll, I'll have that lined up for the next meeting as well.
And those are, well, the, the one that we, that we use right now on the internet, it's open to the public.
We have Open Gov, which is actually just financial statements, high level, it's not the detailed just yet, we're moving in that direction. This is the actual financial system that we use, the accounting system that we use, that we did create a login for the council, so if there was any information you wanted to look up on the fly, by having...
Oh, good, okay, that's what, that's what I was gonna ask, is it real time?
Correct. That is real time, based on, you know, what's been posted for transactions, payroll. Payroll did go live on the system as well, so those payroll numbers are live and available, you know, within the posting or within the checks being issued.
So, this is a...
The second page.
This is a budget?
The second page is the start of a budget that we actually, that Fred and I discussed and we put together. The first page, again, I was trying to save some paper here, what I gave you was the budget actual through December 31st, and on the front side of it is actually the estimated annual budget that we came up with. So, if there's any other questions on December, I can answer those, and I can, we can discuss the budget.
In your estimated budget, you are putting in, you are, you put in a line where $50,000 per year is gonna go right back into...
Right. Correct. I was gonna go through that, once we're good with the December.
That's, that's very generous, and that's something that we feel is important, to maintain everything and have the money available, so that'll build quickly.
Yeah.
You know, in all reality, even though we purchased the Zamboni this year, it was a used Zamboni, it's in very good shape, it's running excellent, but in all reality, we'll, we'll need a, need to put that one into the backup role probably in about three to four years. So, we're, and we're looking at other things, like next year, we're gonna need to buy another dehumidifier for, for the, on one side of the rink. There's only one in there on one side. We've been told by our consultants that we need two, because the ice is soft on one end, and it's because there's only one dehumidifier. For a facility that large, there should be two. But we put all that in there, and we've, we've, we've done a lot of work. As John was stating, we basically redid all the plumbing in the ice rink and the field house, all the electric in all the locker rooms, all the lighting. We put in, the new cooling tower came in today, so that's gonna be installed this week. And like we said, new mats in all the locker rooms, painted everything, new toilets, new sinks, new, you know, so the place is a far cry from what it was. Getting a lot of positive feedback from the parents that utilize the facility. And even with all of that, we expect to come in this year probably either at even or maybe even a slight surplus based upon bookings we have now through the end of March.
We found you some money here already. You have, John, if we look at your totals, you have utilities in here twice, and you're using it.
That's, that's, no, that's, this is right from our system. We actually were trying initially to split out between the ice rink and, and the field house, but...
They have different numbers.
Yeah. So, we didn't, we, I didn't get a chance, I, I'm sorry, I didn't reclass that to have it to be one item. Our initial thought when we set up the enterprise fund was to actually have the expenses tracked separately with the electric bill, and, you know, we can't, there's one bill that comes for both facilities, so the initial thought was to just split it down the middle and charge one to each side, but we're kinda moving away from that model now, because it is difficult with some of those expenses. We only have one, one meter, correct. So, that's not a duplication, that's just the bill itself, or the utilities are actually twice the amount, or 28,000 or 29,000 and change.
John, going back to actual expense page, on your ice rink rental income, you budgeted, you anticipated 300,000, and you've got here range to date 154. You're going to take in another 150,000 between now and the end of the season?
That was an initial projection.
Well, that's my question. Will the season, well, the season can last longer, but typically...
Right. And when we get to the estimated budget, you'll see that we actually do have some significant monies that we do expect for the ice rink. And just this weekend, a load, from what I understand, I believe it was over $16,000 in ice rentals that we did actually...
Yeah. How do people know that we have public ice skating?
Yeah, it's on, it's on the website.
It's on our website, Kendra's done a couple articles.
Yeah, I think, I think we need a sign up there, maybe four by eight, along roadside, that says what the building is, and that there's public skating every Saturday.
If you put a four by eight by the person.
All right, we'll, we'll pass a, we'll pass an ordinance to change that. All right? We need, we need, we need signage out there.
Yeah.
All right? We definitely need signage out there. You know, you, you could, I mean, this is a public facility, it's a West Warwick facility.
You're right.
And the reason why I wanna know the breakdowns, because I just wanna know what, what companies from outside the town that were...
Yeah. They're not aware that we were gonna give them free ice time, too.
Not at all, no. But they don't even know. Not at all, no. But they don't even know. I mean, I ask people all the time, they don't even know. Let's put a sign up there, two-sided, so when they're coming down, they can see it, going up the hill, they can see it. Just keep it very simple. A logo, West Warwick Public, you know, skating rink. And public skating every Saturday from what, whatever time. Uh, how's the attendance right now, do you know? On the free, uh, skating? I heard it was pretty bad. I heard it was like non-existent. Cause they don't know.
No.
They don't know it's free.
How would they know?
People do know, but, and what, no, I understand that, but a lot of people are using the outside rinks like Newport and Providence versus West Warwick. I, I told, I actually told my daughter and a bunch of our friends who wanted to go ice skating last week, then I told them, I said, "West Warwick has theirs," and they said, "Well, we wanna go to Providence." You know, so.
Has one fold of flyer been sent out to the kids to go home?
We actually have flyers that have just been produced, they're gonna go to all the kids.
Okay, so they haven't.
The school department, they haven't gone out yet, but we, we've got them all printed and they're gonna be going into the school department.
For the amount of money that it's gonna cost, and maybe, Dave, are you still here? Yeah, you still have the lumber for those signs that we put up for the Centennial? What's that? Oh, Jesus. You're probably in the same place those round cement balls are from the River Walk. Oh, doesn't he?
No, Dave's got those.
So the lumber's gotta be somewhere. I used, you know, a few four-by-fours and plywood and stuff like that, right? I thought you took it down. Rainey, did you take it down?
Well, I'm gonna thank somebody for taking it down, I guess.
One other thing I'd like to point out on this is we, we, we put in a very conservative estimate for marketing income at 15,000 a year. Um, what I've done is I've, um, I've coordinated with, um, Ron Makely at Bryant University. They've got a marketing class over there and they've agreed to have their whole class develop, um, do a competition with their class to do a marketing plan for the rink and the field house on how we can raise additional revenue through marketing. And, um, we will choose and the council will be brought into this to choose a winner. And the idea is to give a, um, a summer internship to the winner.
That's great.
To implement the plan, so it's a great way to, um.
I'm interested in the people of West Warwick enjoying that facility.
Absolutely.
All right, we're gonna make money? Looks like we can. Well, they're already, they're already offering it, right? They're already offering it. What I'm saying is, you know, line one from the report from the Bryan College kids will be, put up a sign.
No, you're right.
Right? So, I, I mean, is everybody, I, I only have one vote. I'm just giving, in my opinion, that we need a sign up there, so people know that there's public skating. Sponsored by Williamson Law, did you hear that? All right, okay, so, everybody, everybody in agreement? We don't have to vote, but just shake your heads if you think we should put a sign up.
Thirty grand to put your name up there, you opened your mouth, I heard him, did you?
I got John Ferroci negotiating for me.
Oh, all right. Not a sign big enough.
You better have them, you better have them, um, negotiate for your solicitor's job then.
All right, anyway, thank Fred. We'll get a sign up there. You know, like even how we did for the Centennial, where we had one made and then you put, they came out nice, they, they come out very nice, just temporarily until we decide if we wanna go with something, you know, more elaborate, lighting or whatever.
I just wanted to point out one thing that you had actually, cause you asked about the budget itself. The, um, the breakdown or the expense detail and the revenue detail, that's actually for the current fiscal year. So those budget amounts that you see there are in estimates for this year that we're currently in. Those numbers have down slightly than what were anticipated a full year would generate, based on the fact that we got started late.
Oh, no, I, no, I, I understand.
Okay.
But, uh, I mean, you, the budget's at 300, it hasn't been adjusted because of a partial year.
Right.
And on here, and you've got 154 halfway. So I just question you're gonna raise another 154 on ice time.
No, we, we, we believe we will.
Great.
Based on the rents that we receive, and again, when you mentioned about this budget, the GL budget that you do see here is actually a budget that we expect for this year, given the situation where we started late, so it is a partial.
Yeah.
That budget is not something we had, we created it based on what we believe the numbers will be for the current operations through June 30th. And on the flip side, we'll see for a full fiscal year what we expect will be generated for both, you know, for the different revenue streams as well as what the, we expect the expenses to be for the entire year.
Yeah, the, uh, the rental facility, and you've got that on there, I'm sure, um, the retail operation up there, how do you determine who runs it?
We have contracts with individuals who are currently renting space, office space from us.
These existing contracts?
Well, no, they're new contracts.
Is it new contracts?
Correct.
Who determine the cost and what is it gonna cost and all that?
We did it based upon a square footage, so we, we, we looked at, um, cause before it was just all over the place. So we sat down and we looked at the various spaces, we met with every single tenant over there. And just came up with a number, we looked at, um, prevailing rates for office space and different use spaces.
Yeah.
Um, and depending on the area, we came up with an amount based upon that first, for a square footage, and then based upon the square footage they were utilizing and the location, sometimes we, you know, if it's like right when you walk in the door, we charge a little bit more kind of a thing.
Did you consult with any expert in that type of? That type of rental?
Yeah.
We looked at the, the realty, um,
Square footage and all that, okay.
Rates for the state.
Did you compare any prices that other rinks were charging?
I don't believe there's any other facilities that have as much office space as we have.
Space that we rent out. We have a couple of offices we rent, we have a Zumba studio, we have, you know.
The training facilities, lodge.
And I've got to reinforce what you said about the public being very satisfied. Uh, the, some of the, the teachers and people of faculty up at the, uh, the school has commented how nice it is to work with the town, people are there when they're supposed to be, all right, rather than, you know, they go to the door and there's nobody there. Uh, so, uh, they're very happy, the way things are being, uh, run right now, very, very happy. I wanted to pass that on to you. My wife made me promise that I'd pass it on to you.
I will say though, there are certain individuals up there that don't, they still be working both buildings. And the field house bathrooms have been disgusting, where it's been puke feces. And I've had to walk over to the ice rink to tell them, and I was there for two, three hours. And nobody stepped foot into that building. They do not step foot into that building.
That's the first I'm hearing of this.
You know, you know, and David, it's the opposite of what I heard, that the restrooms are spotless now, where before, they might have been like that. Oh, no, I, I don't, I don't not believe you. I'm just saying, it must have been a bad day.
No, it's certain individuals, it's certain individuals, it's certain individuals, and when you walk into the ice rink, their feet do not belong on a desk. Their feet should be on the floor and walking next door and working. I hate to say it that way, but I, I don't wanna take pictures of individuals with their feet up on the desk.
Where the cameras?
They're going, they're working, okay.
I knew that. Anyway, no, but, but good job.
Right, and I, I did wanna mention another thing, I'm sorry, um, just so you're, you are aware of it. Because we knew what the upfront costs were gonna be to get started, including the Zamboni and the cooling tower, we did actually, just wanna remind the council, we did actually take out that second equipment lease. Um, that's covering the Zamboni and will cover the cooling tower, however, we will have an annual lease payment. So you will see as part of the, uh, estimated budget that there is a lease payment of about $39,000 that will cover uh, five-year payments for the Zamboni as well as the cooling tower. Again, not to put all the money up front.
Lease to own or?
Yes, it's, it's a financing mechanism more than anything else. Really not a lease, it's basically financing.
The other thing I, I'd like now is access to the individual, what makes up these, these dollars.
And we also have, um, what we did was as part of the billing and the scheduling, we actually created and have a billing system um, where we can track and age, you know, show age reports for whatever the companies may be, whether it's for uh, the field house or the ice rink. So we can actually see aging reports and we can stay on top of, of collections as well. Uh, Doug is pretty much in finance every day, you know, and the first thing in the morning, uh, handling the deposits and also, um, you know, giving us, uh, information, scheduling and different things like that, so uh, there's a lot more, there's still some improvements we were making. Doug, yes.
And I'll tell you, there's a lot of compliment to it.
Yes, Doug has.
He's really stepped back into it and has really got back involved into it, so.
Before you know it, we'll build an outside rink like Cranston did, right?
Got room in between the building.
No, it's the swimming pool. What's the matter with you? They're so good at running ice rinks and field houses, they all probably run a pool too.
Thanks a lot, John.
John.
Thank you, John.
Welcome.
Upcoming appointments, West Warwick Development.
Yes. Uh, Jason Mess here. I just wanted to follow up on, uh, I wanna, I know people are gonna ask me about the trash thing, cause it seems to be a hot topic, so people cannot put out any trash, uh, the, uh, the TVs and the electronic equipment now. So what, so if anybody asks the question, what should I tell them? Other than tag you in it?
Right now, the state's saying we have to tell residents to deliver it to Coventry on their own. Uh, in the meantime, we're gonna try to work with the state to come up with a different alternative, because that's just not gonna,
Bring the TVs and the states.
Not gonna work.
Okay, we'll drop them all off there?
But right now, it's Coventry.
Okay.
Correct.
And also the, the only other thing I was gonna ask you about the, the ice rink, I'm gonna, I'll put some information about that on there, about the public skate, but, uh, is there a website I can get information? Or if you wanna give me any information about the public skate? You said on Saturdays, they have the public, the.
Yeah, it's on our website right now, it's right on the front page. Yeah, it's, it's right, it's right on the front page of our website.
Okay. So West Warwick residents are free, is that?
Well, no, it's, it's five dollars right now, cause the, because the trust. The problem with free is they'll just go on the ice. We need some way to.
Yeah, put some value to it too.
Put some value to it and get people to, to stop, fill out the paperwork and go on, otherwise we'll be in violation of our insurance.
The downside of that though is.
You got a family of four kids and yourself, all right? That's five, twenty-five dollars, I mean, for an hour. All right, and they, we've gotta come up with some kind of protocol to prove that they're.
Just understand that the issue right now, because the protocol hasn't been worked out, is an issue of liability. So twenty people go and there's no one there, twenty people get on the ice for free, you don't know if they have skates on, you don't know if they don't have skates on, next thing you know, a kid goes down, next thing you get the lawsuit. So a protocol can't be worked out, but again.
What's the difference if they got skates or not? They're gonna fall down, wrong with the skates.
What I'm saying is, when you got people skating, that know how to skate versus people that don't know how to skate.
Yeah.
We don't have anybody on the ice right now, do we? We don't have no security, no safety people, right?
Generally not on the ice, no.
But you're, you're, you're asking for an accident to happen. But as far as getting people in, mom and dad drop off the kids, the kids don't have IDs, how do you know where they live?
Well, no, the parents, they have to prove rules.
Parents gotta sign them in, you can't.
Parents would have to be there, would have to prove some, some way of residency somehow, I don't, I don't know what yet.
So if you wanna make it a dollar for West Warwick residents, or a family of five skates for five bucks, whatever, you know, you can, that's pretty simple to work out.
I want them to be able to use the facility, that's the bottom line.
This isn't supposed to be a revenue maker.
No, it's not.
No, let them enjoy what they're paying taxes for.
Put a, put a procedure, it's their, it's their, it's their rink. Now they gotta pay again, it's like our beaches, you gotta pay to go on our beaches.
We're not trying to reinvent the wheel, I don't think. I think other communities, I don't know if they charge, if it's free or if it's a dollar or a five dollars or whatever, but I just think especially someplace like West Warwick, when we have a beautiful facility like that, you're making it better, you know, twenty-five bucks for a family, that.
A lot of money.
That could be a lot of money. And, and we're not gonna get rich on the twenty-five dollars, so.
No, I say the resident skate for free or a dollar and, you know, if the outside is five dollars. Plus they got, I mean, if they wanna rent skates, they gotta pay for the rentals.
If they're gonna go through elaborate deception so that they can go in for a buck, then, you know.
This is, this is, what are the timeframes for the Saturday afternoons?
I'm not quite sure, I think it was Saturday an hour, but I mean.
Oh, I thought, yeah, sorry, sorry. It's on the website though, if I go on there, okay.
But, but, but I, again, I'd love to see, you know, a sign up there on the hill saying, you know, public skating Saturday and maybe have the one to two thirty with removable stickers so you can change the dollar.
Yeah, change the, uh, the dollar value. All right, I'll pass that along. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Anything else in the public? I have one quick thing. Uh, the Friendly Sons of St. Patrick, obviously they run a beautiful parade every, uh, St. Patty's Day, well, St. Patrick's Day week. Um, they're looking obviously for contributions. One thing we've done in the past, I don't know what they pay for their fee for the parade. Sometimes we waive that for them. Also, they have a pitch tournament on February 5th, uh, at Club Jokes. They have a banquet March 5th for cocktails and dinner at Club Jokes. They have the parade march from Ionades on March 13th. So we have, uh, the Friendly Sons was looking for a contribution. And also Daring Middle School, I received a letter here from Hope, um, for the DMS players for Daring Middle School. Um, and they're looking to do, like, uh, either us to do a half-page advertisement or a full page, half-page is with the picture is fifty dollars, or you can do the full page with advertisement for a hundred dollars. Does anybody have any issues with that?
I got no problem with the whole page.
Nope. The hundred dollars, we just have to direct, uh, Marion, you gotta find out where we're gonna get that from. Do we have any money in our budget? We got something left over, come on. Yeah. So if you can give, uh, this to Hope, um, and also send her our picture, the picture that we have on file. And, um, the Friendly Sons of St. Patrick, we can talk about that the next meeting. Cause I know each and every one of us usually donates the march and the parade anyway, usually. So we can discuss that on offline, how we wanna do that this year. And plus, I'll probably go to the pitch tournament and the banquet, but very good food. I know Angela, they usually have the Sons of Italy dinner the same night. I think you guys do it on purpose.
May 5th, they did it, we've been doing this for a.
March, March 5th or May 5th?
March 5th.
Yeah, you guys are on the same night, every, every year, it's the same night.
I think we're in honor, they picked, uh, can't be obvious.
All right, uh, any other comment? All in favor? Approved.